Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Harrisville City's Council. Welcome to those in the audience, those in our staff and on the council. Appreciate you all being here. We will have the opening Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jackson.
Repeat after me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we come before thee at this time, we're indeed grateful for many blessings to the opportunity we have to meet as members of the Harrisville community and to discuss and plan and do those things best interest of the city. We ask thy Spirit to be in attendance with us as we do so. We ask to bless our employees with the health, strength, and safety that they need to carry on their duties. Pray for all that we have this time. Pray for our country. Pray for our city. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Onto item number three, our consent items. This is approval of the meeting minutes from September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Us presented. Council, you got a chance to look at those minutes? Any changes, corrections? All right. Bring your motions.
I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes for September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please send them.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. One favor.
Aye.
Any of those? The motion carries. Thank you. On item number four, I have an employee recognition. It's not on all of the agendas, but we're going to put this in here. We're going to turn the time over to Chief Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Davis for ten years of service.
Sergeant Davis, please come up.
We also want to thank her for the service she's provided for the city. Sergeant Davis is currently over at our investigative unit in investigations since she's taken over our cases that we carry and cut in half. So she's doing an outstanding job with that. So we want to say thanks for your service. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Slide one, grab some. I don't know, I'd say cheese.
Congratulations, Sergeant Davis. We appreciate you being here. Moving on to item B, our business items. Item five, sorry. A is our YCC presentation. We've got Sadie Greenhall and Elizabeth Hanson.
My name is Sadie Greenhall, and I'm here to talk to you about the city council. So the first item is the fall festival. We will be running our booth. We'll be helping out with the photo booth and a raffle. With the photo booth, we'll be taking pictures for grandmas. In our booth, we will be having information about how to join the U.C. council. We will also be running a fishing for athletes game. If kids don't want to participate in the game, we will have candy and kind messages to pass out. We will also have members passing out recruiting flyers to teens. If they sign up at night, they will have the chance to enter a raffle for gift baskets. We will also have a poster out where people can write about kindness. Next is the community Christmas event. We will be partnering with the Marriott Slaterville Youth Council. We will be volunteering through OCA. This event is run by volunteers striving to provide Christmas gifts for approximately two thousand children. At the event, we will be helping with the Christmas carnival and the Christmas store. When volunteering at the Christmas store, we will assist an adult to help their kids. There will also be volunteers washing goods at the Christmas carnival. During the event, there will also be a life skills class with adults and a resource fair where you can go and learn more information about different resources in the community. Some reasons why I like U.C. council is because I like the opportunity to make new credits in a certain community. I like to know I'm making a positive impact on others. One of my favorite activities was the 9/11 memorial because I was able to help others to learn and remember all that occurred on 9/11.
Thank you, Sadie.
I'm Elizabeth Hanson, and I am the U.C. council advisor. Me and Melissa Ferguson work together. And I figure I'm always asking the youth to present, so I need to take a turn and share a little bit about our council as well. So that's a little to me, a little I like to kind of share a little bit with them. So I became the advisor back in the stream, two thousand twenty-three, and since that time, we've added about fourteen new kids to the council, which has been pretty exciting. We have about twenty-one on our roll. On average, about probably fifteen-ish come to our activities, but we just got two more members those last couple weeks, so that was exciting. A little bit about the service that the kids provide over the last, since the time that I've started at least, the kids have done hundreds of hours of service within the community at activities, city events, preparing for meetings, presentations for city council meetings, recruiting activities, and our leadership conference in Logan. So they work really, really hard. One thing new that I just wanted to talk about for a minute is in August, we partnered with Utah State University for H Extension Office in their teen lifting teens program. In fact, today, me and Melissa Ferguson attended a training all about that program and how it can build and enhance our council. So we're really excited to take those ideas and implement them in our council. One of the things they pointed out that I thought I would just share with you, just information about teens in Utah, they, their research indicated that they are seeing resiliency decrease in teenagers here in Utah. And then on the rise are the anxiety, the social disconnect, the feelings of inadequacy. Those are all things that are really just getting up there with teens. And so through some of the research they've also done, they said there's three things that can help with these things that these teens are facing constantly. They say positive interaction with a caring adult, service to others, and then peer mentoring. So where the peers teach peers to do something. So they said these three interventions can help teenagers here in Utah do the following things. If we, you know, implement those interventions, they will help result in enhanced personal growth for kids. It's going to promote empowerment. It's going to raise their awareness, make them feel respected and supportive, supportive and give them hope for the future. So these are all things that we are working really hard on in our council to provide that positive interaction with me and Melissa as adults, to be that role model, to provide service in the community and to have the kids be out in the community mentoring and teaching and helping others. And so as they do those things, that will help their resiliency grow and some of these other issues that are so high in our community hopefully will decrease. So that's why we want more kids to kind of join our organization because we've grown it, we've prepared this place for these teenagers to come, and that is a safe place. It's a place where they can grow in their leadership skills, in their abilities, and taking charge of things. And so that's something we're pretty excited about this year to participate in as well is this new, this new program. You've seen the youth present at these council meetings. You've seen how incredible they are. They are amazing, and we are so grateful that they are part of our group. Last year, just wanted to remind you guys that we had about fifteen kids come to the youth leadership conference in Logan. It was all for the U.C. council groups, and our council was able to interact with councils from all over the state of Utah. And us as advisors also got training on how to bring these ideas back to our council and grow them and help these kids develop these leadership skills that they taught at this conference. Everything was run by kids, and it was phenomenal. The kids just absolutely loved learning about poor topics that helped them. The theme was the future and focus. And so that is what all the classes and things were built around. We're excited to go to that conference again, and we want to extend an invitation to any of you guys who would like to come and participate in any way at the conference. We can provide that information, but we would love for you guys to come and at least to the council banquet that they have. They have a member of the city council from all, all the city councils in Utah that go there. They have a representative from each city that come with the youth. So even if it's just that, that you're able to attend, we would love to have you guys there. So we can provide those details. Our youth have expressed also that they really want to get to know the city council better. So we really want to work with you guys more. So we welcome you to come to our meetings, to our activities, and just collaborate with us and learn with us. They really, really want to form that better relationship with the council, with you guys. We would like to ask you guys if you'd be willing to provide a liaison, so one of you from the city council to be a liaison with our U.C. council. You would be kind of our, our bridge for communication between our council and the cities. You know exactly what's happening, exactly what we're doing, besides just a little glimpse that the kids give you once a month. And that, that liaison could attend our meetings, they could attend our activities, and they could also participate in the conference with us. And so if that's something you'll consider, we would really love for you guys to think about that and then let us know on that as well. And then finally, we just wanted to let you know that there's such great value in investing in these kids. And the budget that you guys provide goes directly towards helping these kids with their activities, their initiatives, and towards the leadership conference. And so that is the value of what you've given us and what we work with. It is directly for this program and for the kids. And as we grow more, it's exciting to see that happen in our community, but it also means that we're helping these youth who are struggling with so much at this time, build that resiliency that is missing in so many teens here in Utah specifically. So I'm just so grateful to be a part of the group, and Mia and Melissa are invested in these youth. We are committed, and we are giving our time and attention to really help these kids grow and learn leadership skills in our community specifically. And so I just felt like I just wanted to share that with you guys and give you kind of a glimpse of this is what our U.C. council does. This is what we're about, and we really want to work even more closely with you guys. So do you have any questions for me or about what we're doing?
When do you guys meet?
We meet on Thursdays. Usually the second Thursday of each month is when we meet. And, you know, and we can provide any details you want about our meetings, our activities, and you just tell me where it's going to be now. Or I'll have the gal tell the kids, and they'll send you an email.
Six thirty?
Yeah, so anyway.
Well, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Jenny. Very informative. Appreciate that. We are moving on to item B, which is the proclamation for Mother of the Year. I had received an email from Cheryl Farren. She is a member of the Ogden Weaver Chapter of American Mothers, and she has reached out to us and said that a woman from our community has been, let me go back. American Mothers is a national organization that promotes and strengthens mothers, families, and communities. And each year, women are nominated for this Mother of the Year, and she has let me know that we have a woman in our community, which we haven't, we haven't had for years, and it's Lynette Jensen. And so we want to have a proclamation in the city that we recognize her as the Mother of the Year from our city. So there will be a luncheon in November recognizing her, and we want to make you aware of that. That's what we will be doing for her. Okay, moving on to item C, which is the PID discussion. Marcus Keller, would you come on up?
Hi, Mayor. Hi. It's good to see everybody. Hope everyone had a wonderful summer, and I'm excited for some cooler weather. So, yeah, today, we wanted to kind of get this on the city council's radar because eventually it will most likely come before the city council. And so getting your direction, getting your feedback, answering any questions you have either now or later on in the process so we can see, kind of gauge the temperature on your thoughts, concerns, and obviously go over those tonight and answer any questions or, you know, just clarifications you may have. But as, as you know, the Ben Lomen project is going to be one of the largest projects left in the city. If I say county, I apologize. It's been a long, it's been a long week, and it's only Tuesday. But within the city, and one of the things that we're potentially looking at or that has been requested for the city to look at is the creation of a public infrastructure district. And so tonight, we want to go over some of the general understanding of PIDs. I know that's probably something all the city council members have heard about. Again, we refer to it as PID, the acronym. It does stand for Public Infrastructure District. And so I'll go into kind of a brief summary, kind of give a good understanding. We do have other parties here as well. We have Sam Elder, who's helping with work with the district. He can answer any specific questions. But the, the good thing about tonight is we want to kind of give this process, or at least you guys a good understanding, not necessarily so we can get a yes or a no, but so you can ask the right questions, if that makes sense. I think kind of educating city councils so they understand exactly what they're getting into is the most important part of any tool, right? And this is a tool that at the city council's disposal, similar to CRA or, or, you know, different housing tools a city may have. This is just another tool, a tool that the city can use to enhance economic development within their area. And so kind of starting from there, so the public infrastructure district, you know, to, as the most simplest of terms, is a capital financing mechanism. That's all it can do. All it can do is finance capital projects for public infrastructure, and that's very important. So it finances the capital project, and the project has to be public infrastructure. So there's kind of two different parts to that. We'll go into the latter part first because it's a little bit easier to understand. So these tools are there to help developers, you know, that may have large expenditures for land. So for instance, some land's very hard to develop, may have higher upfront costs, may have, you know, whatever, a different plethora of different things that go into it. But this tool is to be able to help those developers kind of break into that cost a little bit and make it more efficient and more kind of palatable because there's a lot of areas that may never develop because of the kind of the cost of entry or whatever you want to call it is very high. And so this kind of bridges the gap. So it allows the developer to access tax-exempt bonds through the public infrastructure district to build public infrastructure. So in this case, the public infrastructure kind of rule of thumb is has to be dedicated to a local government. So that could be roads, water, sewer, PI, pressurized irrigation. So, so keep in mind, this can't just be used to, to, you know, build a townhome type situation. It has to be specifically used for public infrastructure. So in the case of, let's, you know, take Ben Lomen as an example, there's a lot of different things that may need to happen in this development as far as off-site improvements, a water tank, different connector roads, different sewer, regional connections, whatever that may be. So this public infrastructure district is a tool to help them affordably pay for that through tax-exempt bonds. Now, you're asking yourself, okay, well, how does that raise revenue, right? Like, what's the source behind that? So in this case, the public infrastructure district would be able to levy a tax based off whatever you dictate. So again, all of this is within the bounds and controls of the city council through a governing document, but they would be able to levy a tax within that area. So this could never extend to current residents of Harrisville City. So I don't want anybody here to get worried that they're going to get additional tax. This could only be across the boundaries that the developer owns because it requires one hundred percent consent of the property owner. So they can never bring somebody in without their consent, and I would recommend anybody that's currently in Harrisville never to consent to, to being in that. And they would never do that anyways. They say that, you know, jesterly. But at the end of the day, how it's done is a developer may own a large area of land that they want to develop, and as part of that, a PID could place a boundary around that property with their consent. And then they could levy a tax on themselves and to the eventual end users, which may be a combination of commercial and residential. And then that tax revenue goes to pay for the bonds that are issued to build the public infrastructure. And so that's kind of, again, very high-level summary of how it works. And so the, the idea is, you know, we've looked at it a lot of different ways. You know, and in this case, you know, the idea would be that public infrastructures are done so that people that are coming into a city are paying for the additional burden that they're bringing to the city without passing that along to current residents. So those people within the Ben Lomen or within the PID area would pay a higher property tax than someone outside of the Ben Lomen area. And then that property tax would be used to help pay off the water, the sewer, the roads, whatever public infrastructure was needed to make that area come and be built out. So again, the, the way that we've usually looked at it is people coming in, you know, new residents for the most part are paying a little bit more than current residents because of the burden that they're bringing as far as the public infrastructure needed to support their development. And so that's, again, very high level here. And we'll go through the processes and different things like that. I was looking to see, do you have Trev on with my group? He's going to help on the next discussion with the sales tax bonds. But I don't see Randy on, but maybe I'll pause right there just for a quick second to see if I've lost anybody or to clarify anything at this point. Okay, well, that means I did a semi-good job. And so I'll, I'll give maybe a minute too for, for Sam and his team if they want to talk a little bit more specifically about theirs. But my job is just to help you, educate you all in general on these PIDs. And again, just to be completely transparent, I think PIDs can be very good. I also think PIDs can potentially not be needed in certain cases. It really depends on each project. Each one's going to be dependent on the different needs and, you know, the different criteria within it. And so as we've talked to Ginny, as we've evaluated their proposal on what they're trying to do, we've been running different numbers, we've been meeting with them, we've been trying to basically justify the reason why these people should pay a higher property tax than people outside of it. And that's up to the developer. It's not up to the city council to prove, you know, why they need to do it. And so in this case, the developer feels like there's a significant high capital infrastructure cost to get this stuff going, a lot of it outside, you know, kind of the off-site improvements. And so that's what we've been looking at as we've been going forward. It's a very riveting topic, so I know. There's a lot of people wanting to talk about it. And so just to give you an idea of how this process may look, I believe currently the city's working with the development group through the MDA.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And so I believe that's currently where the city's at. They want to finalize the MDA. And am I calling it the right name? There's, okay, Master Development Agreement with the current Ben Lomen development so we can kind of understand all the different things that are going into it and to help justify or identify why the PID would be needed based off the current development agreement. And so that's kind of the first part is they're working with the city on at this point. They've submitted a letter of intent saying, hey, we're interested in this. We really would like it. It's going to help our development. And so the next step would be, once the MDA is completed or in a good enough form that, you know, we know it's not going to have any substantial changes, then they would come and present a governing document to the city saying, this is specifically what we're requesting as far as mill levying, bonding capacity, and everything else. Again, to reiterate, this would be a bond of the PID. It would not even show up on the city's audit. There would be no obligation for the city to ever pay for the bond. So that's one thing it does, keep the city completely harmless regardless of the bond's failure or success, as well as you're not pledging any of your assets or any of your revenues towards it. So it would all be pledged based off that property tax for public infrastructure. So again, it's, it's a little premature, I think, to get too much into the weeds, but we wanted to educate you guys and just, you know, answer any questions because this is currently in process. Again, you would see it multiple times before we would ask you to vote. So the hope would be by the time you're actually asked to vote on it, you're very comfortable, you know, all the ins and outs of it, you understand what it's being used for, and it, you know, it, it makes sense, I guess. So that's why we wanted to have this meeting today to, to kind of go over that in more detail. And I, and I'm just going to pause for a second because we do have some of the, you know, PID specialists. They, they do this, you know, across the country type situation. So if that's okay, Mayor, I don't, I don't know if Sam or, or, please, if you'd like to clarify or add some additional comments.
I need more of this note.
Sorry.
Hi, everyone. Sam Elder from DA Davidson. We're the underwriter of these bonds, and we go and sell them in the capital markets across the country. We have a really particular focus on the inner mountain west, having done a lot of stuff in Colorado and been here in the state. So I'm here kind of representing the landowner, which is Sundance Bay, as well as the potential buyer for this project, Fieldstone Homes. And I'll have to come up and maybe just introduce where they're at in the process of this project and what Fieldstones Homes' interest is in this project as well. I was in front of you guys probably about a year ago, so may or may not recognize me. But we were in here for this project in particular in, in talking about how a PID could help this project get off the ground. And here we are a year later, right? And not, not the council's fault, by all means, I'm not suggesting that at all. But I think it goes to show that market conditions got really difficult for a moment. And unless you're a well-capitalized group, unless you have certain financing vehicles, it's really hard to make these larger master-planned communities pencil, right? And so getting buyers interested in coming in or getting lenders interested in putting in more money to get these projects going can be, can be challenging. And so that's when we're seeing the use of PIDs be implemented across the state. And there's tons of these now. We're issuing bonds almost every week using this type of tool for, for master-planned communities across the state. And it's usually, you know, I would never suggest that this is a tool for every project, right? If you've got fifty lots, maybe even a hundred lots, maybe even a hundred and fifty lots, it doesn't make a ton of sense to layer on an additional tax unless those hundred and hundred and fifty lots are extremely high-valued and they super remote where it's really difficult to get infrastructure. So these tools are mainly used to bring in off-site infrastructure and pay for that off-site infrastructure and public amenities such as parks and trails and other things to really enhance the community. And there's very little lenders that want to front that money before the first home goes vertical because the way that lenders get paid is on the sale of the home, right? And if they have to put in twelve million dollars before the first home gets built, they're like, I don't want to do this deal. Give me a project that requires two million dollars of infrastructure before I get the first home. So this one that has about ten million dollars of off-site infrastructure costs and public amenities is in need of something, right? And so that's kind of the request of us is to come up here and say, hey, can a public infrastructure district be the right tool to really push this project off the ground and bring some of these amenities to this community and see this actually get built out in the way that Harrisville had planned to get it built out a long time ago? And so one of the ways to do that is through this additional tax that Marcus had just mentioned, which is just an increased tax on the future homeowners that would choose to purchase land within this area. And they would be disclosed about six or seven times throughout the buying process that they were going to buy a property within a public infrastructure district and subject to these taxes. And once again, it can only happen that way, right? Because we can't go to the existing citizens and say, hey, help us pay for the upsides of this sewer improvement. And so, you know, they would get charged a half a percent of additional taxes. So I think about the standard tax rate across Utah is one percent. You know, on like a five hundred thousand dollar home, you're probably talking about a hundred dollars more a month-ish of additional payment. So just to give you some context on about what the homes would be here in this area and what that tax would be annually, that would be about twelve hundred dollars or thirteen hundred dollars a year-ish. And so it's similar to an HOA, right? Where someone's disclosed, I'm buying property within an HOA, and look, you're going to get people that say, I don't want to buy property within an HOA. I don't want to buy property within a PID, right? But that's the marketing hit that these people, as the developers and as the home builders, need to think about as they sell property with the additional ability. So that's kind of the ask of what we're looking to do. It can be a really powerful financing vehicle to see projects go and move quickly. And I think one of the important elements here is, is getting to the commercial, right? It's super attractive to the city. To get to the commercial, you got to get rooftops, right? To get rooftops, you got to get infrastructure. And so maybe everyone doesn't love that statement. We would love- And so maybe everyone doesn't love that statement, but we would love to have commercial there first, right? But I think this kind of project would drive a lot of, you know, the good community that would drive some commercial and bring in the opportunity for other commercial within and around this area next to the new city. I think it's the new city hall that's going to be built or planned to be built around there, right? So open it up for any questions and then maybe I'll just turn it over to the property owner in Fieldstone Homes to just describe what's happening right now on the project.
Hi, my name is Scott Kirkland, and I am with Sundance Bay. Sundance Bay is a lender. We've been in this project maybe as long as you all have been in this project. We financed the former developer, and now we own that property. And we, since we've owned it, and which has been eight, nine months or maybe longer, it was evident that we needed to keep moving forward because I think a lot of promises were made prior that have not materialized. So we commenced, as you all probably saw, and did the highway improvements out on Highway 89. We started as soon as we could on Millennium Park to do the improvements that were part of the MDA and also promised probably to happen some time ago. So we, you know, spent quite a bit of money in addition to what we had financed or loaned to the former developer. And we then proceeded to market the property, found several opportunistic, I mean, not opportunistic, but opportunities to move the property. We chose Fieldstone Homes as the buyer. We've been working with Fieldstone Homes for several months now. We've come into the city for several meetings. You will see them again in about a month to talk about the MDA, which needed to be amended. It was written by a developer who didn't really understand the needs of builders. And I'm not trying to put it down, it's just evident that whoever our buyer would have been, Fieldstone, D.R. Horton, doesn't matter, they would have wanted these changes in the MDA. So we're in that process. The PID is also a critical component because, and I'll just give this example, when somebody buys a piece of property, there are lenders like us, okay? So all of the entitlements were not in place, the risk level is higher, the cost of our money is higher than Science Bank, for example. And also, our patience is typically less patient than a PID would be, okay? That money a developer can use, it will give them several years to be able to get their infrastructure in, get things moving, get homes built, get people moved in, and the tax revenue starts to happen. So I think in two ways, it's more patient and it costs less. And it's the type of money that, at this point in time where the MDA, well, you know, the former borrower did get a lot of approvals in place, which is great, so it takes a lot of the risk out of the project. Now Fieldstone and Sundance are working to try to even fine tune that. So the risk level's a lot lower at this point in time, and the type of money is important to move forward. So anyway, I'll introduce, or I'll turn the time over to Jason Harris from Fieldstone. But it's nice to meet all of you and look forward to working together.
Hi, Jason Harris, Fieldstone Homes. They invited me up really for my good looks. I'm kidding. So really, I don't have a lot to add, I just want to encourage, right? We talk a lot, it was brought up as a tool, that this PID is a tool for financing. And a project this size, and like Sam said, you won't see a lot of these because it will really only come with the size of the project. And yes, it takes a lot of capital to do what we do, and it's not that the capital isn't available, it's that we want to be smart about the capital. And this is, this kind of capital comes with a very low cost. And for something like this where the first phase of development, right, is all in is going to be about $18 million, right? A typical subdivision where we come in and we develop 50 lots or something like that is somewhere in the $3 to $4 million range. Significant lift. And so I just want to encourage you to consider this as a tool that we can use. What's funny about what we do in the home building side is we don't always have the ability to just go get these tools, even though we know they're available. I was before you, if you remember not too long ago, and I talked to you about the tool of zoning, right? That's a tool where we ask permission to use the tool. This again is another tool where we're asking permission to use the tool, right? In one case it's zoning, in this case it's for financing. And so in a project like this that has such a great need for good tools, this being a good tool that we can utilize to get the project actually going, we'd love it if you consider it and ask questions because we want you to be comfortable with it, but we want at the end of the day for your approval. The Master Development Agreement, which we're working on, and we've met several times on a new, and like was mentioned before, we're excited to make that progress. We'll go before your planning commission tomorrow night, so I'll be back here tomorrow. And we'll get into the weeds on that, and I think you're really going to be happy at the end of the day with where we're going. It's not necessarily the MDA is a huge problem currently. I think we're just coming to it with a new set of eyes, which will improve the Master Development Agreement. Again, with the goal of starting this project and actually building homes, which we're super excited about doing. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be right over there. And again, we're really excited to do this project in your city. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to add one more thing. Jason, how many projects have you done across the state? How many homes have you built, built still?
We actually just passed our sixth, I think we're about 6,200 homes closed in Utah and nationally, it's like 30,000.
And I just wanted to note that, that in Utah, 6,200 homes, and this would be their first PID that they've ever asked for. So if you talk about the number of neighborhoods and communities that they've built out where a PID just doesn't make sense, there's a lot. They're not here just asking for a PID because they're going to ask for it on every project going forward. There's actually, we've analyzed a bunch of them for Fieldstone Homes, and they ultimately, we've decided together that it's not the right PID, they should go see private capital, right? So this is a unique scenario for them, having been their first. And once again, just wanted to isolate it. This is the development, and I think I said this last time, it's a development decision, not a developer decision, right? You're doing this for the development, you're not doing it for a specific developer. And that's what I said a year ago, and I'll continue to iterate that. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. I think we've gotten a lot of good information. Talking to Brody really quick, one thing I did want to just emphasize was that this would be a separate local government, so all the revenues collected from that property tax would go towards the PID, go towards the bond payment. The city would not be responsible to make those payments, you would not be responsible for the board members on the PID or anything like that, like all that is a self-sustaining thing, so I don't want you to think this would be an additional burden on any of the city or the city council if it were created. And again, there's lots more nuances we can go over later today, but just want to kind of update the city council. You know, I know you've been asked multiple times if there's any questions, if you have any questions, you know, as we're going through this process, please reach out to Ginny or, you know, and she can get in contact with us and we can either jump on a call or answer them. But until the MDA is done, we've kind of pumped the brakes a little bit on the PID because we want to make sure we understand what's, you know, what's all within the MDA. And then once that's finalized or at least to a good spot where Ginny kind of gives us the head nod that it's not going to change substantially much more after that, then we can go into more detail on the PID and get feedback directly from you guys as well too. So, perfect. Well, that's everything I had. Hopefully that was exciting. It's always exciting, public finance, it's great.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, all of you. Appreciate you being here tonight. A very informative discussion, I thought it was educational to us all. Moving on to item D, another discussion for public safety and city hall. Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So to bring you up to speed, Council, on where we are at with the public safety and city hall project, the architect, who I believe just joined us online and would be available for some questions, I'm thinking, maybe not. The, we have just completed the programming and site planning phase of the project and moved into, we're transitioning into the next phase. So this is a really good opportunity for us to take a look at the project and decide based on the pivot that we made this summer after public feedback on the second issuance of bonds. And Marcus is here and available to answer our questions as well, moving forward with the already issued $9 million and what we want to do moving forward with that. So this first slide just tells you some of the scheduling background on where we are at and where our next meetings are for transitioning into the next phase of the architectural design. We have, he's completed an entire scope kind of timeline of where we began and where we kind of refined things in July. We have met, I believe, at least once, maybe twice since the August meeting with the city council when we discussed this previously. So some of the cost breakdown that we asked for is outlined here. For the total project, as we've talked about, we have the $9 million issued. This is the proposed cost, the breakout of the police, the city admin, and then the council chambers, courtroom, the community meeting room, all broken out. The architect has also provided some numbers for inflation trends that they have seen in their experience working on projects like this. And they've put them out for where they would anticipate if we don't issue the bonds timely and we go into a 2028 type of construction window, what that would look like with the inflation trends. The architect did point out at our last meeting that inflation trends have typically been around the 4% to 7%, but in COVID and during COVID, we saw them jump up to 20% plus. And so we have been conservative on these, assuming that we're not going to go through another experience like we did with COVID on these, but it just gives you an idea of if our construction window bumps to 2026, if it bumps to 2027, 2028, you can see the impact that would bring to the project costs. And how that is related to our discussion for today, as you're aware, we are under construction for Phase 1 of the Public Works Building. And after our discussion at the September meeting, you issued the, you gave us the authority to issue the $300,000 to complete the second floor of the Public Works Building. So we have worked that into the schedule and we are pretty much on track to be in that building by the end of February. So the remaining phases that the city is concerned with are the second phase of the Public Works and the Police City Hall. This is how it lays out on the city's property as the site plan. And the city is constructing the roadway till approximately here. Maybe that's what this tick mark is from the architect. We'll complete the road project with Phase 1 of Public Works to complete here. We have received the federal appropriations funding, and we are also submitting for more grant money to complete the roadway connection to Highway 89. So those items, I put that out because that money has already been assigned and accounted for. And so any discussion that we have tonight will be based on the Police and City Hall and what direction you'd like us to take in the next steps with moving the project forward, or if this is an opportunity where we pause and we can ask questions to Marcus on what that looks like on unraveling the $9 million and recognizing from the first slide where we are at, the cost to complete the architectural design period, that would be the total for the City Hall Police Department. And that includes during the construction, so it's a little tricky for us to know. There are several steps through the process that we can hit the pause button, and this is one of them.
There's no action tonight, Council. This is just a purely discussion, so I don't have time to ask any questions while we've got the team together. Marcus, do you have anything to add to it?
I can give you an update on the bonds if that's helpful as you're kind of going through this. As we kind of discussed last time, we needed to make sure that, you know, we either start spending the bond money or we pay them off and kind of clear that out so we don't get in any trouble moving forward. So that's kind of where we're at now. And, you know, again, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'd probably say we probably need to have some understanding of what you're wanting to do. Just to give you an update, we did get a kind of a current fund balance of what, you know, with accrued interest and everything. Currently, the bonds originally were issued in $9 million. Currently, in the bond fund is $9,600,000, just based off the interest that's been accruing in there. So today, you have about $9.6 million that is available to spend towards project, projects type situation. So, and, you know, I know last time we talked, maybe we only spent a portion so that we can cover some of the engineering design costs and then pay off the rest of the bond. Currently, right now, the payoff for the bonds is approximately $8.97 million roughly if we go into December. So you would have about a difference of $700,000 left in that that would come to the city. But again, we just need to be careful. I don't want the city to get in any trouble with the IRS or anything as far as spending down requirements and all that good stuff. So I think just sooner rather than later, we kind of have to make one decision or the other, either start spending it down or pay it off, so.
So it's the $300,000, we decided to finish the second floor, is that counted off of this?
Yeah. Yeah, you can pull it out of that as you're saying like, hey, we've got $600,000, we've accrued an interest, what may qualify? I believe that was one of the qualifying expenditures. So that would be, you know, if you wanted to say, hey, we're just going to pay for some of the soft costs on this project, then that would be one that I would say is roughly $600,000, $700,000 net from the bonds after payoff, just use it towards those soft costs.
Well, I think we also need to kind of consider that with the hurricanes and the deal in 2005, when Katrina hit, construction costs skyrocketed then as well. So we need to be mindful of that. Hey, this is Marcus. Do you want me to zoom in on it?
So we've just completed the programming and site plan. So as you can see, the architect is kind of broken out here where we're at, moving and transitioning from the programming and site planning to the schematic design phase. And so there's, in between these phases, those are where we have our opportunities to pause the project without moving on to the next step. Once we've entered into those windows, it makes sense for us to complete those next steps. So if the council is hesitant to move forward, we would want to know that as your staff so that we're not pushing the project forward without your guidance and direct. without your guidance and direction. And then, again, the, these are just anticipated timelines that we would complete the schematic design during the month of October, towards the end of October, and then we'd go into the design development phase. What we, what we're kind of faced with here is if, if we move forward and we complete the architectural design, but we don't go to construction, then what does that look like and what's the timeline on that? And then are we rebuying future architectural designs to update to building codes that may change? Or other, we'd have to adapt the project. And so we don't necessarily want to take the project down unless the city instructs us to, but we also want to give you opportunities to make changes to save the city money, if that's where we're looking at, or if you want to commit to us that we're going to go forward with it, we're happy to do that.
So remind me where Phase 2 fits into this?
Phase 2 is not included in any of these numbers. The Public Works Phase 2 is not included or shown on any of these numbers.
It's a specific phase one?
This is just, this is, this City Hall. So what we're talking about for today's discussion is this, this section here. Not, the Public Works Phase 2 is not included in it, and obviously Northview Fire Station is not included. We're talking about this development here of the Police and City Hall.
I know there's a lot of discussion as far as if going ahead with plans and putting the plans in place, and yet we're holding it and not doing this for several years, like you say. And I would say, is that money, it's always, because it's going to have to be rechanged once a new architecture comes in and updated, things like that, and that's expensive.
We'll have to rebond for the money. Because we lose that money.
And when is rebonding appropriate? Nobody has crystal ball to tell us or know when to do that. And when is the public going to be okay with that? Where we're going to bond and say, okay, we need a new City Hall. Well, we need a new police station, what we need, what we need to now, but right now. Yeah, anyway.
So that is the kind of tricky, sticky point that we're at. We have the $9 million at a very low interest rate. We are making payments on that bond, but where we're at for that additional $3 or $4 million and recognizing that there will be outside costs that we can't anticipate right now. We like to have a little buffer on the bond money so that we know we have what we need to cover it.
So that's the question, isn't it, it comes down to where, how do we finish this?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, are we going to, are we going to be able to move forward with the police station in the next two or three years, or is it five to 10 years?
Marcus, do you have any crystal balls?
If it's two or three years, I say we move forward and do some of the, what you're talking about. But if it's five or 10, I'd say we stop now.
You know, just, just kind of, I don't have crystal balls, unfortunately, or I would, yeah, be known as a Warren Buffett or. But the, the idea, and I think just kind of thinking back to the public hearings where we, you know, heard from the public, I mean, we want to be sensitive to everyone, right? We want them to understand what's going on. I think that one of the reasons the city got beat up pretty good is we, they felt like they didn't have enough detail on it. And, you know, it seems like, you know, if we can find a way to make it a very, you know, transparent, very, here's the diagram. I, again, if you want to look to see who the pros are at getting ready for a GO bond type elections, it's school districts, because they do it so much. They're constantly doing it, but when you go into a school district's GO election, they've got all of this material on the cost. They've got all these fabulous architect designs, you know, every, all the renderings, and that costs a lot of money. But again, that's, you know, they're willing to invest it because they know without some of this stuff for people to actually see and kind of really feel like they, they understand what's going on, that they're not going to vote for it. And so that's, that's kind of the situation I feel like, and based off a lot of comment is, I feel like it seemed like people may have been more supportive if they understood the project more and had a firm understanding of, okay, here's the pricing. You know, what exactly is the project? How is it going to be paid for? Is this going to be an election? Is it going to be truth and taxation? You know, what's going to be the mechanism, you know, in educating people? And perhaps, you know, spending some of the available proceeds to get to that point? Because at the end of the day, I, the issue is we don't have enough money with the current sales tax bonds to pay for the project. So more than likely, we're going to need to either, you know, again, just based off public comment, you guys make the decision, but based from what I understand, we have a little bit of money, perhaps, to pay for some of the soft costs to get some of that material, but eventually, we're going to have to send that money back, right? That, that's my understanding. And so the idea would be, well, how do we proceed forward? Well, if we have all this good information, I mean, I, I honestly think, you know, it's never fun to do it at GO election and oftentimes, you get a lot of pushback on it. But if, if you have a good finger on the pulse, then that's going to be the best way to do it, right? Because then you get a tax levy that people know will only go to pay for the bond. And when the bond pays off, this tax levy goes away, unlike truth and taxation, which, you know, never goes away unless it's voted on to go down. So it's just, it just requires a lot of work, so.
So I guess, can I clarify with what you went over, you know, getting, getting the heart numbers, finishing with the architecture? Are we talking about spending that soft money? Or spending the money on those soft costs to get the final project so we can present it? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we would be asking you, if that's the direction you want us to continue. We're at that pivot, or not the pivot, we're at the pause moment where we're in between phases here on our architecture. But yes, we would want your direction. We can take the next step and go all the way through schematic design and come back to you and ask, do you want us to, and have better ideas?
For me, with, with all the public feedback that we got, that's exactly what we were asked to do, is get heart numbers. And yes, that does cost some money, but we thought that, you know, the interest allows us a little bit of leeway. And so for us to actually do what we've been asked to do by the public, I think that's exactly what we need to do.
I'm not sure if this is a, I haven't even clarified, Jenny, but we are already paying on the $9 million we've already got, right? We've been paying those bond payments. That is not something that's, anyone is going to have to have a tax increase on. We already have that.
So we're looking at, we're looking at the numbers in the square.
So this is the appropriate, this is the approximate cost to complete the design, architect and design for the City Hall and Police Department? Yes, this is what the city's looking at. And we've expended some, some of this money already because we've completed the programming. And we've delayed the programming and site planning because of the pivot and all the things that we were faced with. It was a much longer programming phase than we anticipated. But yes, we're looking at, and just to clarify, staff's direction that was, we were given last month, complete the second floor of this, this Public Works Phase. We did anticipate coming out of some of that interest of the $9 million. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
So the bidding and negotiation, I'm not understanding what the $6,000 or $6,600 is?
The $668,330 is the total cost for it.
I understand that.
I'm sorry.
The bidding and negotiation.
Oh, the bidding and negotiation.
Let me see where that fits in.
That is where the architect is involved in the process of when we put the project out to bid for contracting.
On phase what?
On the City Hall and Police Department.
Okay, but if we're not going to go that far, is that money eliminated?
It eventually would have to do.
Yes.
Eventually, it comes, becomes a cost.
Sure, I understand. But somewhere in, you said, well, we're going to stop and push the button and maybe hold. That doesn't make sense to me. Why are we bidding on something that we're not going to do?
So we would pause, assuming that we got through the construction documents? We would have to pause the project if we're not going to construct it? Is that what you're asking?
So eventually, we're going to have to have it so we know exactly what the cost will be so we can present it to the public to get the bond. That's what that is.
The, the little dotted square is what we're talking about doing. Everything after that is only when this body tells us to work on that.
That's what I was asking for.
That's why I stepped up. I got you.
But then if, if we take the time, we do this, and even if we go through the whole thing, and we do push the button, and you can, it's a guarantee that the project is going to cost us more every time, the more we wait. But right now, you know, we're not that far off finishing the project. But waiting, I mean, no, they don't have a crystal ball, but they've done it long enough that they're saying, this is going to cost you a lot more money.
Can you scroll down to those projected?
But just to kind of keep in mind, you know, the deficit we have is $3, $4 million roughly, I think, based off some of these numbers. The, the issue we have right now is we ask the public, I believe it, they, it was the lease revenue bonds that were referred in them. And so we don't have really a tool to raise that additional money. So it's not like, oh, can we look at this? It's like, they put a stop to that. So really, we have limited options on what we can do. One of the options, as Jenny described, is we can spend some of the money to start preparing to potentially, you know, go into next year, educate through 2025, either hold a GO bond election at the end of '25, or, you know, relook at a lease revenue bond, or, you know, whatever kind of the public allows them to do with that time. But the, the option we have unfortunately isn't. Because I, because I get what you're saying, oh, we're so close, but it's, we don't have the ability to bridge that gap. So it's, we're kind of stuck with what we're stuck with at this point. So it's, it's really looking at those 2026 numbers because a GO election wouldn't happen till the end of '25, and then you would issue bonds at the beginning of '26, and that's when that would kick off. So that's probably a little bit more accurate as to where we're at at this point.
I know that we, at one time, talked about just building the police station. Have we more information on just doing that? Is that something we could do within that?
We, we haven't started that process at all. That would be a complete reset on the architectural side. And because the site has been identified and laid out the way it has, that would impact pretty much everything we've done to date. So certainly, is it possible? Yes, we can, we absolutely can start over if that's the collective consensus between the council. And we, we will do what you tell us to do essentially with the project. But we're at a pause moment, and that's why it's back on the agenda because if we're going to take the next step, we want you to be telling us to take it.
So let's talk about a timeline about the pause button. So we would pause now, and at the end of '25, we'd address what's going to happen with these figures, right? Is that what it is?
If we pause now, we wouldn't take any steps forward at all until it was given the direction to, to staff to say, okay, we're going to reevaluate this. We'd turn in the $9 million. We'd pay to date what we owe for our architectural designs, and then we would just wait until we're given a direction to do something different.
Perfect, you're 14. Perfect, yeah.
I mean, I, again, I still think to, because I've had multiple people say, get us exactly what you need, what you're building, where the money's going to, and then sell us on it. So in order for us to do that, we've got to keep going.
We've got to keep going as in just continue with the project?
Yeah, continue.
Or continue with this?
Yeah, this piece. Because the bottom line is we have to have it. It's not an option, it's just when? Right, when we, this, when we build, pass it down.
But if I'm understanding it, that still means that we turn back the $9 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I would actually say, I would strongly agree. I think that's probably, based off everything I know about this, the best course of action is to say, let's go ahead, pay off the bonds, see what's left. As far as that budget, we kind of know it's going to be about $500,000 or $600,000 remaining. And then, you know, at that point, then Jenny can start, you know, potentially going through this based off, you know, pause, start, pause, start, however quickly the council wants to go through that. But I think the next target date in my mind would be, you know, if this is a goal that the city council wants, or a project, as you mentioned, you're going to have to start selling it to your neighbors, to your friends, getting everybody comfortable with it. But, you know, probably beginning summer of 2025. Hopefully, by that point, we have all the information. And then, you know, in August, September, we could notice for a tent to do a GO bond election, then we'd go out to election next year as part of the ballot. So I think, again, it doesn't need to be an election. I'm just saying what I feel like I've heard from the public. Obviously, GO bond elections are tough, but it seems like people, if, if they get all the information, are going to be more happy to see the GO bond election and trying to do this through truth and taxation, was at least the feedback I heard.
You had mentioned that on the infrastructure of putting the road all the way through Highway 9, and that we have gone ahead and applied for more money and grants?
We are working on it currently.
What do we project that that's going to cost? And the money to build that road, just the infrastructure and putting the road in?
The, the latest projections put us approximately, and help me, Justin, we were about $2.5 million, I think, for the total cost towards 300?
Jenny's right in what we would have to finish. So essentially, we're about $500,000 into it right now with what we've done in front of the Public Works and getting the water line across 89. So all in, with it all being completed and said and done with, probably about $3.2 million for that entire road. Again, we've got $2 million in funding from the federal government to be able to put that road in. And then we're working to get other grant monies. We have some impact fee money. We have some Class B and C road fund money that we've all, that we budgeted and projected to build that road, knowing it'd be a city road, and it's going to, it's going to, not just impact our city site, but other businesses and more business in, areas.
True.
And I'd just like to add to that, that I was going to mention, when we initially received the appropriations funding, we were under the impression we had to go through the same process we do when we get other federal funding, which requires us to spend some of that money on specific engineers and environmental studies. And we've recently been notified that we do not have to go through that same process. So that was about a $500,000 to $700,000 savings on that roadway, which makes us feel a little bit more comfortable that we already have the money we need to complete that project, particularly if we are granted more grant money based on some other applications that we have going in that will buy lives, that will help us with that area of the city.
Well, we understand where the Northview Fire Department is at this point in time, what they're talking about. It makes sense to complete that road because that's a critical part of this whole project in their respect as far as services to the city from the fire department. That's why I ask where we, you know, the focus, I think, is build the infrastructure, get the road in. I realize where we are, we're going to have to turn the money back in as far as we've got. I ain't hesitate as far as the plans, but if the plans need to be part of this road, I'm for it. You know, because eventually, you know, there will be a building built there. But I can't, you know, I can't tell, it'll be five or 10 years, six, seven years, or whatever it would be, three years. I don't know. Economy drives that, and we won't know that. And yeah, I think we can look down the road at '25 and '26 and we'll say no. Just because, like we say, the next hurricane flows through, it does affect our economy. Just because, like we say, the next hurricane flows through, it does affect our economy here. We've watched it in every one of our buildings over the last 30 years. You know, when I moved into my subdivision 30, 40 years ago, that was a major impact during that time, you know, or afterwards or before. So, yeah, it's one we have to address, I realize, and will continue to be addressed. But I think we need to structurally put the road in first, get that done, then we move forward with the other projects. If that means making the, making the plans, and then we have the option to redesign them as we need, that's fine. But I know that costs money too.
Yeah, and just to be clear, with this discussion tonight, we're not asking for money for the road?
No, I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we don't cross wires there.
I don't want to have that kind of concept. It's just in my mind, I'm trying to say, okay, what's the highest priority here? What's next? What's next? What's next? Steve, I understand where you're coming from, it's going to cost us more money. But if the money's not there, it doesn't matter if we got it in our pocket or not, in my opinion. And as far as the money here and the bonding of that money, yeah, I'm pushing the whole button right now just because we've gotten that feedback from the public, and we don't have enough money, and we don't know where it's going to come from.
Maybe I'll just clarify too, that is a good point. This doesn't have to be an all or nothing when we do pay off the bonds. If, if for instance, we put the road or whatever it is, if that's what the city decided, and said, actually, we need to keep a million dollars of the sales tax revenue bond to pay for kind of laying the groundwork, that, that's appropriate. We just kind of need to know exactly how much we want to pay back again, just so that we can, you know, use what we need, send the rest back, and then we'll, we'll be ready to go.
I have a question on that. What is the timeline on that?
Fourth.
The, the 9 million needs to be spent by this, the end of this year?
Um, that, that's a good question. So typically, rule of thumb is you have two years to pay, to use your bond proceeds. There is a drawdown associated with the two. Uh, we've been keeping an eye on that, talking with Brandon, but typically, two years is kind of where you're at. But when you have an indication that, hey, this project's not going to make, we know that we're not going to do it, I think it, it, it goes pretty far. If the IRS were ever coming and audit this transaction, say, okay, on this date, we knew we weren't going to make our decision, we immediately paid it off or, you know, started the process. Because it is about a 30-day process to notify, um, the bondholders, say, hey, we will be paying off X amount of dollars. You'll be receiving a check for an early redemption.
Are we about 18 months into this?
So we issued the bonds, the nine million in 2023. I can't remember the exact date.
Spring.
Spring 23, so yeah, I think we're about a-
We're not quite 18 months.
Yeah, we're, we're getting pretty close.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of why I've kind of said is, you know, I, I would, it'd be nice to kind of get it wrapped up by the end of the year too, but, um, you know, just, just let us know. I, I just emphasize it's important we kind of have it one way or another, kind of the direction you guys want to go.
Thank you.
I'm just telling you my feelings at this point. What I look at is, is the little dotted area, thank you, is important, and if we can work with that, then we ought to hold the money back to work with that and let the rest go. That's my feelings at this point, but the road, I think, is the high priority. And if half some of that money needs to be put into that road, then we take some of that money to complete that project. I think funding, as far as grants and any money we can get coming in from the government, and that's been a great blessing here. We need to look at that and research that, but we also need to look at the further development of that whole area. And that road is key. That's my feelings.
All right, so this is not a, this is a discussion tonight, it's not a decision making. So, but we do need to get some direction. So what I'm hearing is that we will go forward with what we're doing here, figure out what we need to do to, to get it to the point where we have to stop before we can do construction, and then we'll evaluate what we need to do before we give the money back. Is that correct? Add or subtract what I just said we need to?
Yeah, because we will have to withhold some of that money for the second level of public works. So that's going to have to come out there. I, I don't disagree that the road is important, but again, this building is not up to, it, it's not compliant. And eventually, we're going to get sued, and that's going to cost us more money than money to get this information so that we can get this building built. And to me, it doesn't make sense to not get the information we need to get public support.
Okay, so yes, I, what you said is-
So, okay.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Great, okay. I think that's what-
Is there one more person that's on the same page? Her, Grover and, excuse me, Councilmember Wilkinson and Councilman Ruffus in agreement that we complete the dotted box here.
That's what I'm going to call it from now on.
The dotted box items here. I, I believe we'll be pretty close on expending what we have in our interest for the second floor of the Public Works Building, and then this portion of the architectural design for the City Hall and Public Works, or, excuse me, Public Safety Building. So we just need one more council member, and we'll go that direction, or-
So then we can, can we use any of the nine million on the infrastructure?
Yes. Yep, it was, it was issued, the bonds were issued for the completion of the-
I'd rather say just put the whole infrastructure on that.
So we can, we can do that.
See, really, when we're looking at this, we can look at this another way. We, we did two issu- two issuance of bonds. We did a six million issuance, we had a nine million. Okay? It's feasible to the city that we have the money to pay the nine million bond. We pay off the six million dollar bond, finish out public works, have some extra money. It also closes up some of the cash on hand we had from the sale of public works and some other revenue sources that we have. A little bit higher interest rate, a little bit bigger bond payment, but it is feasible.
I just threw a monkey wrench in there.
I was going to say, want to run that all by me one more time? I think I caught it.
I think that would warrant a little more, um, discussion on staff's side to, to be comfortable with that. But yes, that, obviously, we do have two issuances of bonds that we issued the six million first, and then the nine million for the City Hall and Public Works.
Does each dollar have a name to it?
So, so I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't track. So, so what was the suggestion, Justin, that you're wanting to?
It's still all the same bond. So we did two issuances. So if we just paid the six million dollars off like you just pointed, we don't, we, we don't have to pay out the full nine million.
So, so there is, so you can't, you couldn't use proceeds from the 2023 bond to pay off the 2022 bond? So the proceeds that are issued by the 23 bond are designated within the parameters, they have to go towards certain projects, one of which would be, um, the police, city hall type project. But again, that would include the infrastructure. So that's why we'd be okay, if you're like, hey, this road is a part of this project, then that would be a justifiable expense, but you couldn't use it to, to defeat, so that you would run into an issue there. Sorry.
Okay, I clarified that.
But we could put in as much infrastructure as we needed to keep the project, I mean, not just the road, but-
Yeah, you, you could. I, I would just say, just, just be a little bit careful about that because, again, you don't, I, I think public perception's very, very important right now. And so making sure that they don't feel like that you're doing it without, you, does that make sense? Like, obviously, you guys can do whatever you want. This is legally issued, you've already done the sales tax bonds, but if you're going to want the public support on this, I would, I wouldn't say, okay, now we're going to go ahead and, and mark out where the building's going to go and have the part, you know what I mean? Like, that, that gets a little bit toward kind of a poke in the eye, I think, if somebody were to drive by and say, wait a second. We, we stopped that, like, now you're doing it without having us-
And practically speaking, like, there could be infrastructure that could go in, but until you actually know what building you're building, like, you're gonna, you might spend as much fixing the infrastructure in whatever day you choose to do something, add a order. Add a, it might cost more to do that. So maybe there are, like, the main road, or there is, you know, a, a stub of a water line or, or main utilities, but to get too finite, uh, I don't know that that's worth the risk when we don't know what y'all want to do for the building.
I'll be the fourth.
Did we have a-
Oh, the third.
The third?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we've got-
Do I need to have, do I need to have a, I just need to have a, yeah.
We would have, we'd have to do a resolution to approve all this and to talk about bond repayments and all that stuff, and that's what an official vote would be doing. But we need direction as staff as to what we're actually working on.
Okay.
We just need direction from three.
Okay, so are we clear on both sides? We need more discussion.
I think we got the direction we need.
Okay. Great. Great discussion, thank you. Thank you for all your help, all of you. We are moving on to item E, which is a discussion. This is possible action for approp- appropriation of fiscal year 2025 budget funds. Uh, Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll, we'll move on to the next item here, also talking about budget funds. But just as a quick reminder to the council, as we adopted the certified tax rate at our August meeting, we did not receive as staff immediate direction on where we wanted to appropriate that funding. So we are back to discuss that this evening. And as a reminder, the approximate certified tax rate increase will bring approximately $50,000 in revenue to the city. The three gaps that staff was asking to fill with this revenue were code enforcement, planning, and public relations and website. So as our staff, we, we participate in a program that allows us to conduct salary studies or market studies for positions, municipal positions. And so our staff has put together some salary studies for code enforcement. One, code enforcement. Two, some of the low, mid, to high, and the average salary to cover that position. Currently, and I'll touch on this a little later, the Police Department is covering that need for us right now. But these, the $50,000 revenue cost would cover approximately a salary for, as Chief and I met earlier today, we're, these numbers are provided through a statewide program that we subscribe to so we can see what the salary positions are for these particular positions. But we admitted that this seems a little bit low for a full-time position and a little high for a part-time position. So it kind of hits right there in the middle of, of what we might need to hire a person. And I just want to draw that to your attention too. And Chief, you can speak to that as well as far as covering the code enforcement into your department for us during the interim time.
Yeah, so right now, I mean, as the law enforcement in the D for the city, I kind of believe that, uh, the public is looking at, at the Police Department when some of the code enforcement doesn't get met. I think that they kind of correlate those two. So in my mind, we've taken our detective unit and started some of these code enforcement things because the perception of the public, I, I don't need, you know, the, the perception of them thinking the Police Department's not doing their job when it comes to code enforcement. So I've taken that on to try to make sure that we're reaching out to the public and showing that we support that. So that's not usually something that falls under the Police Department to do without, without any play. But our detectives have been covering those cases. When, when we had, when we moved Sergeant Davis in there, you know, investigations, we had two investigators. Uh, right now, we're low on staff, so one of our detectives is actually working shifts. So it is creating quite a strain on the department right now, covering code enforcement investigations at patrol, so.
So having said that with the salary study, the, the revenue would cover a need to fill that. The planner salary study came in, kind of in a similar, the planner tech, the average salary for that, a planner one or a planner two, or we, based on what we posted for where we filled that position. And the public information officer, so they're kind of classified into categories. Based on our, uh, market study, we found large cities and small cities. As you can see, the larger cities incorporate that salary into what their staff needs are, and small cities are paying slightly less, but the costs of those public relations officers are significantly higher than the other positions that we were looking at. So staff, um, we put, we sharpened our pencils for you. We definitely know that the impact on our residents has been significant over the last few years, and we are trying our best to fill the gaps as we can. So we have a proposal for you tonight, after we've done some research on our side, where we can continue to cover the code enforcement needs out of our salary and wages from our already adopted 2025 budget in our Police Department. We are down a few positions in our police staffing on our patrol officers right now. And we have some confidence that there will be money in there to cover the code enforcement. And we can bring someone on part-time. Would you have an interested individual who's recently retiring that would be available to cover some of that and take that load off of our detectives? Who are covering that right now. As far as the planning goes, we contracted last year for contracted planning services. We've increased that in the adopted budget for this year. The actuals for last year were more around $12,000. We did increase the budget to $10,000. We are using that contracted planner more frequently as we've got more proposals coming into the city for continued development or new developments. I did participate in a program called placer.ai. I've received two, um, I've done two webinars with them. They offer services that assist in planning. They don't offer a planner, but they give you the data. So for example, they have pinpoints, they can tell us how many people are visiting our Walmart, our shopping center. They can tell us how many times they're visiting, how many frequency the same person is coming. And they can tell you if they live in our boundaries, if they've, they can tell us the traffic patterns on the highway. And how I, we feel as staff would benefit from that is we can give that to potential developers. We can look and assess each parcel of property. One of the challenges we have in the planning world is getting enough rooftops to support their commercial and what that looks like to them. They don't know how much traffic we have on our, our roads that are impacted by the future signal, by the, the new Ben Lomond project, how that looks with the development on the Ben Lomond, whether we move that commercial towards the highway. These are all things that we've been talking about from a planning world to bring new business to Harrisville and take the tax burden off of our residents. This is a tool, it's a subscription-based tool. It's a $15,000 annual subscription for that. I, they are welcome, you are welcome. I can set up a, some type of a demo if any of you are interested in seeing that. I was actually very surprised at how much data they are able to provide. That's only one, I can check into others before we commit it to anything. But that is another planning tool available that we could try and stay afloat with all of the projections. You can see as our planning commission agenda grows each month with the new proposed developments that we're getting. And, and many of them are now transitioning to commercial developments as well. And the public relations and website needs, we met with a company called John Guilfoyle Public Relations. They offer website design and also public relations, um, option for local governments. They, they do specifically cities and counties. I don't believe they do private companies, but they've given us a proposal of a one-time development fee to redesign our website, to make it user-friendly. And they have a one-click, is kind of where they set their gauge at how often people come to the website. They want people to get the information within that one click. They would charge us $4,000 per department, but that would create a separate website tied to our main website for our public safety, our public works, and our parks. That would help with our public safety recruiting as new recruits are having a hard time finding where Harrisville's located or, or much information about us. It would be helpful to do that. So our proposal tonight is to utilize some of these other opportunities that we've kind of dug into with that revenue source to create a more user-friendly website. of dug into with that revenue source to create a more user-friendly website for our public, which has been a very common request, that we are more transparent and we have more information on our website. They do offer public relationship, relations options for approximately $800 a month. We could cover about six months of that. So the highlighted expenditures are outlined down here for the $50,000 revenue that we have allotted for this year. And those development, one-time development fees related to the website and public relations, actually not the public relations, but the website, could be redistributed in the fiscal 2026 budget to help cover the code enforcement for next, next fiscal year. Because that, those are one-time fees that we would be paying to get up and running. And then the, it's approximately $4,000 annual fee for maintaining the website. But we are open to discussion, and we're happy to do what the council directs us to do as far as those appropriations.
You might understand that with code enforcement, we're still complaint-based, right?
Yes.
Now we have someone going out and kindly bringing into people's attention that when it's absorbed, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet? What, when will that take place?
That's up to the council.
You said there's somebody available, possibly.
There's somebody available to cover our current code enforcement.
Right, right. So when we, when we get that person, will they be proactive in going after our code enforcement violations?
That wasn't our intention unless given direction by the council to do that. That, that wasn't the staff recommendation to be proactive. We, we have mixed emotions on the staff side. We have people that want us to do that, we have just as many people that don't want us to, to do the proactive. We will do what the council wants us to do.
Well, I think we need, no matter what, we need the code enforcement, because I don't think the strain that you guys are going through right now is fair. You're, you're, you have your jobs, and it's, they're hard enough, and then being shorthanded is even putting more strain on you. So I would think that the code enforcement is, is a must. However we want to do it, however it looks, you know, make that decision afterwards, but I think that's, I think that really is our top priority to try and take some pressure off the police.
Some of it lost, as far as what we're talking code enforcement, because I think in the back of my mind, it's, you know, now we know there's hard code enforcement, there's soft code enforcement, so what are we talking about here with those $15,000?
We're talking about absorbing the cost of code enforcement with our current salary and wages.
Well, what is code enforcement doing right now, just so I have an understanding?
They're handling it complaint-based right now.
Okay.
But if you'd like to see it go to, then driving around and, and seeing, you know, problems and talking to the people, then.
Let's ask Brooke the opinion on that.
Yeah, I would just say this, and again, forgive me for being directed one, right now you have police officers covering code enforcement complaints, which is, and I'll just say it, that is a gross misuse of a police officer. Okay, so we're talking about this, if code enforcement is the number one priority amongst the consensus of the council, what allocation should we put to that? Okay? You saw the salaries, that's, just for the record, that's not a full-time person. To talk about filling the complaints that we get and having some sort of proactive approach, you will keep a full-time code enforcement busy all year round. So do you want to pay for that or not? But right now, what's happening is, police officers are not writing tickets, they're not patrolling, they're delayed on calls because they're going to check on weeds, or animals, or these things. And I'm not saying that's not important, but in the hierarchy of public service, a police officer should not be doing that. The time a police officer should ever get involved in a code enforcement complaint is when I say, as the prosecutor, or as the attorney, this is such a bad situation, it's not really a code enforcement situation, this is criminal violations, and you need to go do X, Y, and Z. Beyond that, a, a police officer should never go to a code enforcement complaint. So, again, call me harsh, but that's, that's the reality, we are, and if we're talking about code enforcement, let's talk about it in reality.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
And we were suggesting that we hire that person part-time, so this is a former police officer, retiring police officer that would be available to cover that code enforcement, but it would not be taking away from our current police resources.
So they'd be part-time, and they would not be proactive?
That's what we were proposing, but I hear the conversation.
Right, I'm just making sure.
But our proposal was to do part-time complaint-based code enforcement by hiring a part-time individual that would be able to cover that.
And not be a police officer?
It would be under the direction of the police department, but it would not be a patrol, it would not be a public safety position.
Well, I, I do agree, that's, we've got to, to address that, and we need to get that changed, and for now, what we can do is complaint-based, sounds like, you know, and yes, I, I see that there's tons of stuff that we could go drive around and look for, but that's, are we there yet? But I also think that a city planner is, you know, we talked before that that's our biggest liability in the city right now, so we need to put some resources in both of those places. I don't know if the website, to me, is, is worth that much right this minute, but we do have to have the transparency, and so we're gonna, we're gonna start. So if this is the best we can do right now, then we've got to start somewhere, so.
I think with the planning, city planner, I think that's important, but what we have to understand in going to the meetings on, on Ben Lomond and stuff, until we get houses, the commercial's worthless. Okay, you can bring in maybe one or two, but you've got to put the seats, people in the houses first, and then concentrate. Now, what this person could do, you know, to help us out a little bit, I think would be great, and I, I would say that this is good, because the website, I think, needs to be done. Would is, would we be over in our complaint, with the complaints, would this person be busy on the city code enforcement?
Yeah, the complaint-based, based on what we're proposing, yeah, I would anticipate.
How much time will we have to spend on a code enforcement gap?
Too much.
Are you gonna meet, or you're gonna?
More, more than I have time.
So, so then, a full-time person would probably be the smartest thing to do, because they can't even cover what it is on, on part-time right now.
But the part-time person.
And I would just, I'm sorry, I'll jump in. I don't disagree with you, $50,000 doesn't pay for a full-time. As a part-time person, and, yeah, I know. I mean, if we have a candidate that we know about that's willing to do it, great. So, yeah, it's a tough spot.
Yeah.
So perhaps I should have prefaced this, that these are type of Band-Aids for each of these positions. They're not filling the need completely for any of these, but we're, we're trying to make do with what we've got.
Would, would the person we have in mind still maintain their police officer certification? Like, could they be a backup resource?
No, that's illegal.
A police officer can work on code enforcement stuff, but a code enforcement can't be cross-certified to do police work.
Okay.
I, I a hundred percent agree. If we have somebody who's willing to do it for that much money, and do a complaint-based, and that's what we got, that's what we're ready to do, then, again, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And there's a lot going on that needs enforced.
Yeah.
And, and I understand that, you know, we have to have the butts in the seats before we can bring in someone for commercial, but we still don't want a hodgepodge of the city with things going here and there and being, you know, like, we have, you know, liability. So, and this gives us good information to start with, and then we can move forward again. That's, that's why you're right.
So what I'm hearing is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, our department heads have been sitting here quietly, and so we're looking at basically somebody here in public relations websites, is this, is this an important part, or is it not at this point in time?
I totally agree that it's important, the public's asking us for this information. Every time they've come in, they've, they've asked for information, said the information's not available. So this is a huge part of something we need.
I think, yeah. I think it's a good proposal, really, because like you said, it's, it's a start, it's a Band-Aid, maybe we can move on after that.
I recently interviewed some cadets at the Police Academy, and during our review, we asked them what they knew about Harrisville. A couple of them have gone to the website, but still didn't know anything. So I kind of turned that into a learning thing for me, and I started asking them what they wanted to see. These new cops are looking for the flashy stuff of departments, and our website just doesn't have any of that. I mean, we have a lot to offer at this place, but we're not portraying that to the public.
Well, and I, I've gone on the website, and it's hard to find codes and where to file the complaints and, and basic information, there's a lot you have to filter through. And my father-in-law, who's done consult, you know, consults with, with cities all over the northeast, northwest, and he, he has a really hard time navigating that, too, and he's used to going and looking, is my point, so I think that is really important as well.
I like the proposal.
It's important.
Okay, so do we have three then?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, this is a, I definitely need a, a motion and a second, and we're gonna have a roll call if you end up discussing.
I'll make a motion that we go with the proposal that we have on the screen right now.
One second.
Okay, is that good enough to do it that way? The appropriation?
Give me one.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, give me a second.
Okay, okay. You want to?
You have to.
Okay.
We will prepare a resolution for the next meeting, and we will make sure we meet the state law requirements for this appropriations after this discussion, so we just need a head nod on that then, for the, okay? So we'll come back to you with a resolution.
On the 29th?
She does the curveball.
On the, um.
We won't know about that yet.
Yeah, we wouldn't know after. I don't know if we have time to read that, so probably November, it's gonna be.
All right, thank you, Brooke. Thank you for the discussion on that. Onto another hot topic, animal control discussion. Jenny?
So tonight, we're talking a lot about appropriating funds, right? And one of them, it's, this is giving staff direction. We have been invited to attend an animal control meeting where they will be discussing the new budget, the proposed budget. The Weaver County Animal Control Director is proposing an increase to the staffing at the shelter due to the fact that it, years ago, it became a no-kill shelter, and at that time, this, the money did not change, the appropriation for that funding did not change, and so they have more animals to take care of because they're a no-kill shelter, but they have the same amount of employees. And so they are proposing an increase to their staffing to help maintain and take care of the facility. How that impacts us is, they are an enterprise fund, so they are just like our garbage fund, they can't run in a deficit. So if they make an increase to their staffing, then our fee schedule that we pay, we currently pay animal control, will be increased. And they're looking for direction from the cities on how we feel about an increase on that. And so I'm here to get your direction, so I can take it back to animal control and let them know what our consensus is about having a fee increase on our animal control services. They had a, in your packet, there was kind of a breakout of the positions.
It was a little difficult to.
I don't believe, this, yeah, this was present, this was provided to us. I don't believe they have given us a number yet. They had a projected number at the meeting that I attended last month, but I think that that, those numbers will be presented at their budget discussion.
It's large. It's large.
I imagine it will be quite significant, because their double, their proposal is doubling their staff, essentially. They're creating seven new full-time positions, I believe.
And did it also say that they're asking for money to, like, improve equipment and?
They were showing the condition of, of the facility.
What entities are still, are participating with them?
I don't have a.
Oregon City.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, here we go.
Yep.
Actually, North Okden still is included in this.
Yeah.
Is this the shelter services?
The shelter.
So we pay two different payments to Weaver County. We pay for our animal control services, and we pay for the bond for the shelter.
Are they gonna work out a formula based on call volume, population?
That's what's involved in this presentation, and we'll go tomorrow.
Then they'll have probably information from other cities south of Okden.
Yeah, they're asking, yeah, they're asking all cities that are.
Just other counties, I'm asking.
So they have an advisory board that gives their feedback back to the commissioners, is how, and we participate as part of that advisory board in quarterly meetings down at the animal shelter. And so this is, this was brought to our attention at the last quarterly meeting, but the county runs on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, so their budget will be adopted and then in place in January. So if these fees are increased, then we need, we will have to address it in our 2026 budget.
So what would you like, what would be the feedback we take to the county?
The first feedback is, is how did we get to this problem, again? And I don't think we as a city have been informed by Weaver County, whether it's the commissioners, or the advisory board, or whatever, that has allowed this animal shelter over here to come to the point that we're still playing a bond on it, and it's basically falling apart in a lot of areas, because it's been unkept. How did we get to the point that we went from a kill to a no-kill, and no information was getting out, and no information as far as money would go up? I think there needs to be some accountability here before we turn around and say, we're gonna put a Band-Aid on this. Because I'd like to get to the bottom and find out, how much are you really, really telling, all you're telling me is, we need more people to help it right now, but I don't think that solves the problem. Now, if it's the fact is, is that we went to a no-kill because it's money that is now available to run these, why didn't this money come back to this shelter? I mean, it's that simple. The money had went someplace, why didn't it come back to help offset what we need to make this a no-kill shelter?
Can we have them come and talk to this body?
I'm sure the director would come in.
The director?
I'd be happy, I, I would like to hear what they have to say. It's hard for me to say, I want to give more money here to take care of animals, when this problem's been going on for years, and now it's being come to our point because we need more money. That's not how you Band-Aid it. It'll solve the problem. That's how I feel.
I'm happy to take back the feedback of the council and request that they give us a, a presentation at our next council meeting. They, they request, I didn't want to make a decision on behalf of, of the council, that's why I put it on as a discussion item before their meeting tomorrow. But we also need to be mindful and consider what our, our options are as a city in utilizing the services. We do have very limited options as far as covering animal control services, and so we, we want to maintain our relationship there, but make sure that we are, are asking the right questions to them.
It kind of got us over a barrel, because we have no other options, other than starting our own, and that would be a nightmare.
I would, I would like to ask when the, when they last adjusted the adoption fees, if they've done it, and I know that can be a deterrent to some people, but when, when, when was that last adjusted? And then it says that the cost of spays, you know, new nurses and spays are not funded, so is the, you know, is the shelter doing that? Is that a cost? Because in other areas that I've lived, they have someone that they contract with that will do it for a much lower cost, and then when you adopt it, you actually have to pay that. And then when you adopt it, you actually have to pay that fee and get a, you know, a voucher. So, you know, so there's some other options, I think, than just, you know, raising the fees. But let's talk about some other options, and when we last looked at some of them.
Yeah, they did have some contracts for some nonprofits, and I know they had some challenge getting those nonprofits paid, and so they decided they didn't want to participate with the shelter anymore. They have been utilizing, in conjunction with Utah State, part of their veterinarian program. They've been utilizing those students to kind of address those spay and neuter needs for the shelter. But what that looks like and how much cost savings or what that costs them, I don't have those details. They certainly should. But yes, they do discuss what challenges they're facing to have that met. And I know we've had some issues with the feral cat program that they have, and how many they'll take. And once they reach their maximum, they won't take anymore, and that's kind of a challenge in our community as well. So those are all important questions.
When I read it, I thought that we just barely went to a no-kill. It hasn't been years. Didn't they just do it? Like a year ago, seriously? No, is that longer than that? Okay, I thought it just happened.
I think they have a problem, too, because they used to be able to use the inmates to help clean and water animals. They're not strong to do that.
And they're into the same challenges with volunteers as we are. They have to do a background check, and they have to have quite extensive information on that. So it sounds like to me that we can go to the meeting, collect the information, and you'd like a presentation by someone from Lieber County to be in attendance to our next council meeting, if possible.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, then we can ask questions.
All right, thank you. Moving on, can I start business items, onto number six, public comment. For those in the audience that have anything to address the council, you can come up to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes to discuss anything that is on your mind.
I think this is a good meeting, lots of good information up here. Just a couple of points, just looking at some of those numbers.
Can you tell us your name, please?
Sorry, yes, Jason Hadley.
Just for the record.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for reminding me. But $30,000 for a website is very, very high. And I know that we're seeking out someone who's maybe considered themselves and made themselves a professional in what they would say in that area, but I think that is insanely high. There's many, many opportunities that exist here locally. You could save a lot more money on, in that. And I think that your reaction that you had of the animal stuff, those are the same reactions we have when we see numbers, and how you can vote on something without numbers. You know, I appreciate you holding off on any action until, you know, numbers, because numbers are facts. Facts are what tell the story. So those are my comments. I think that there are ways, there are local companies we could support that would invest money back into our own economy, that could do just as good of a job. If you need references, I have many people I know that do amazing web development. It would not cost the city $30,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Wedge, back to, kind of backtrack a little bit on these, the city building, police station. When it was first proposed, the bond, it was just a, we need $9 million, or whatever the number was. You provide numbers today, and for the life of me, I cannot see why a city building, office building, just a city, would be $3 million. I don't get that. What is so special about the city office building that would cost $3 million? The police station, it's not gonna be a jail, if I remember correctly. So what special needs are for that police station that costs, what was it, $9 million? Those prices seem very expensive. And I think the public has spoke out pretty strongly, well, the people that have attended these meetings anyway, that we don't want the city building. The police station, I guess there's a compliant concern there, which I don't know if anybody's really said what that compliant discrepancy is, and why can't we fix that here? Evidently, if we're not compliant now, how are we getting around that? And why can't we continue whatever we're doing to do that? But the whole $12, $13 million for the two buildings combined, I just don't get that. I don't get where that number, that price comes from. That's like the school districts, $150 million for a school. How can you justify that? I can't see that. So before, like I said, we spoke very strongly opposed to going forward. And I get going through some of the steps to see where you're at, but if the end run is, "We're not gonna do this," why spend that $600,000 or whatever that dotted box was? Why spend it? Because the residents have said no, and I think it's just throwing money away because we're gonna continue to say no. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Roger Sherman, 1870 North, Southern 50 West. Appreciate the conversations that you had today. One of the things that I have concern over with regard to the building that you started talking about, and the dotted lines and all that stuff. As one of the concerned citizens has brought up issues in the past, we are concerned about transparency. You know, there's still, in my mind, just like the guy said before, I still have, I don't have a complete understanding of why we're gonna get sued. I mean, I deal in business every day, and I have to deal with being sued every day, no matter what you're dealing with. But I don't know that we need to put the city in jeopardy or make them liable for different things, but then the other side is, I drive by the new maintenance building, and do we need the Ferrari of a building for Harrisville City? When we go from an $825,000 building that we sold to an $8 billion building? That's a huge change. And now both Harrisville's growing, are we growing like 10 times? You know, the other thing with regard to your money, are we, you know, we talk about, "Well, it's gonna cost us more money in five years, it's gonna cost us more money in 10 years," whatever that number is. But you also might have 600 more houses in the Ben Home Estates or Ben Home Development, if that thing goes through. You might have other houses that start to develop. So you may get some other revenue besides just that, so maybe those things are gonna offset with each other. And the question that comes to my mind, do you need a $9 million city and police station? Could you get by with $4 million? Could you get by with $5 million? I just think that we, for some reason, have got to a point where we have to have a 30-foot-high building, you know, to block the things that neighbors have had open view for years. So we could have a maintenance building that suffices way higher than most cities around. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for the information tonight, and for those that stood at ground. Oh, I'm sorry. Kathleen Hobash, 1149 North, 100 East, here in Harrisville. Been here quite a few years. So I do want to, I do appreciate the discussion you've had on a lot of things, but I do have concerns. One is animal shelter. I don't know if they do fostering. There's a lot of places that do fostering, animal shelter return over to foster programs. So why is that burden being put on that side? Appreciate you guys wanting to see more information before you decide to make any decisions. But I think one thing that could be suggested, if they're no-kill, look at fostering programs. You see all around the states where shelters do that, they find fosters and they put them in there. The other thing, too, is I have a concern, again, for the new building that's being built. I did happen finally to go down 750 and see a partial building built there. And I'm wondering if we're trying to, like they say, keeping up with the Joneses. What city are we trying to keep up with? We're a small town. I heard North Augn at one point in time wanted to build a new building, and the people told them, "No." And they found another means and was able to build their buildings for a lot cheaper than what they were being told. I think there's other options that we can be looking into, maybe going to our people and residents and asking them, "What do you want? What are you looking at?" rather than saying, "I feel like these are being shoved down our throat. You will do this, or we're gonna be sued, and you will do this and accept it." That's not the way government is supposed to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public comments. Move on to Mayor Council Fall of Us. I'm going to start with Director Five. Do you wanna bring us up to date with what things have got going on this month?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're right in the middle of the fall cleanup, which is a successful event again. Appears to be more and more attended and participation year after year, so it continues to get bigger all the time. So I think it's definitely catching on in the city, it's a good thing that we offer. And then, of course, on my mind, is the Fall Festival on the 22nd. I hope all of you are planning to attend. If you are, and are bringing a trunk or your own booth, please give a chill and let her know that we'll get you assigned to a stall. All the good things that we had last year are in place, so we're moving forward and excited for, do you have any questions on it?
This was all donated money, right?
For...
For the Fall Festival? Did we have a line item for this, or is this...
We have a line item for it. We do, we are getting donations from a few different places, but yeah, it's a line item.
I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Lots of other things going on, but those are the two big things right now, cleaning up the Fall Festival. Thank you. We put a lot of work into them the last couple months, so, yeah, thank you.
Chief Wilson?
So we have to deal with staffing issues, so we've been working on, trying to find officers to fill our positions. It's taken up quite a bit of our time covering shifts and that. We're working on our Shop of the Hero event, it's in December. We do have a replacement officer that's scheduled to start first part of November, so we're looking forward to that as well. And we have firearms next week for our qualification. That's about all we have this month.
Thank you. Director Shinsell?
Currently, Public Works is working on a project on 750 West for the reinstatement of the quiet zone for the railroad. We will be having some flaggers out there tomorrow, deploying some concrete median to extend that to meet the federal railway requirement. And then we'll be working on signage to get that updated to help push along, it's kind of a hot topic throughout the state, and been on many news media outlets, that the trains are no longer being quiet. Also, as we've been asked, the Public Works building is coming along. Again, we took a lot of time and effort in the thought process of building that because we did not want to build something that in 10 to 15 years, it's where we're at now, outgrown, too small. We've structured it for a 50-year building, sort of last one beyond the time that we'll be here. The other thing is, we're just getting vehicles maintenance ready for a couple of big things. One, annual street sweeping, we kind of try to do that sometime in the first week of November. We have to get off the leaves, starting to fall off the trees to help keep all the leaves picked up. And then also getting our vehicles ready for the season ahead, which is snowplow.
I have a question for you. So apparently a tree was taken out of Millennium Park. What do you want to give us an update on Millennium Park?
The tree that was taken out in Millennium Park was actually taken out because the state of Utah considers that a dam, and there can be no de-rooted vegetation within the dam. That is a tree, that is that tree. So yes, it has been taken out due to the state requirement of no de-rooted vegetation in the dam. We are working with that and doing some other things to make sure that we have our dam safety protocol in place.
Minister Nye?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two things. We are pleased to announce that we received our compliance report from the state on our moderate income housing report. And there are mixed emotions on some other cities, and the compliance is not a great percentage. So we're very fortunate that we received our compliance letter, and so we can move forward on that. And having said that, we, the mayor and I have been working with the county in scheduling a tour for newly elected legislators. The hope is that we can bring the existing and new legislators out into our communities to show them the challenges that we're facing, to kind of level the narrative that's being talked about down there at the state legislation about cities and their development. So we're working towards having that in November, and I'll bring you the date, if any of you care to participate in that. I'll let you know if that's gonna happen at the next council meeting, or if I find out ahead of time that gets solidified, I'll let you know when we find out.
All right, just a couple more things that I have before I turn it over to you. We talked a little bit about Millennium Park. The developer, the lender here, when we first met with him, we kind of gave him a hard time, and we'd been promised all these things in Millennium Park, and nothing had come to fruition. So I don't know if you've been over there lately, but the sidewalks are put in on 20, 2,000. 2,000, the sidewalks next to Millennium Park. They've got the new restrooms up there, they're actively putting in the playground equipment, and they're taking care of the sprinklers, the fences, all those things are being taken care of. He had asked me whether we would like to have a ribbon cutting, of course, anything that we can do to promote that we have a new park and that we need to have the public understand that this all came at no cost to the city. So we're very pleased to have all of those amendments in the city again. One other thing is that there's a large NBA amendment coming before Planning Commission tomorrow. If that indeed passes, we will have another special session of city council on October 29th to follow the timeline that needs to be done for that, right? So we will let you know what happens tomorrow night before, that's not set in stone yet, okay? Councilwoman Jackson, you have anything? Councilwoman Lawson?
We had a very productive senior lunching today, it was lots of fun. A little bit better attended by a few, but we found out that Troy Hall played all the way to me though. And one of the things that I think needs to be happening is better communication with our seniors. A lot of them just don't know or have forgotten. So I'm gonna start up a texting tree, so to speak, and an email, sending you on that one. I'll send it, send it you on that one. So we can get that information out, keep it current with people.
Is this from the senior luncheon?
For the senior luncheon, just the senior luncheon.
Okay.
Anybody's welcome, but, uh, we was managed to take a few homey sandwiches out to people that may so appreciate it and gain a bigger perspective of seniors that are just home with nobody listening. It's really a critical thing here in Harrisville. It's not just what we're doing, it's literally going across the street and checking our neighbor.
Councilor Fawcett?
Yes, so, um, I know that in this setting, we can't really answer a lot of questions and have a lot of interactions. So, um, I have concerns with, with the cost of the building. And I really encourage you to look up ADA laws and codes, building code and municipal building codes as well as public offices. They have a lot of different, um, things that we have to have. And, and, um, so that way you can kind of educate yourself and be more of, of the conversation inside and outside so that we can have a better conversation about what we really need and what you're willing to cost, you know? So that we have that more open communication. So that's just some thoughts ahead.
Thank you. Councilor Christensen?
I have anything?
All right. Well, we have had a long period of meeting. I appreciate all of you being here. Can I get a motion?
Totally.
Second.
Okay, Holliday?
Hi.
Alright, thank you, thank you all.